This meeting will now come to order at Central Berkshire Regional School Committee. This is regular meeting on November 15, 2018. At this time be notified that the meeting is being both video and audio recorded. And is there anyone in the audience recording at this time? If there's so, please disclose that. Seeing none, we'll move on. All those who are able at this point in time, please rise for the Fudge of allegiance. He's way up there.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, the two Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do have one more newly elected member that should be joining us shortly. We're gonna have to take a brief pause when he arrives so that the superintendent can read the oath. But tonight is the organizational meeting of the school committee. So at this time, we'll start off with a roll call.
Dr. Craftries?
Yes.
Mr. DeFazio?
Here.
Ms. DiTomaso?
Here.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Farley?
Here.
Mr. Hagmeyer?
Here.
I believe Mr. Hinckley will be joining us. Mr. Locatell?
Here.
Mrs. Ladisori?
Here.
Mr. Les?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mrs. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Amicost?
Here.
We still have an open seat in Washington. Mr. Bartels can't be with us. I don't see Mr. Hoag and our student rep as well.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. And the Chair validates that this agenda is compliant with Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. So we have a lot of motions up front. We need to select the Chair for the following year. You select the Vice Chair. And you'll see the motions as we move on. I'll try to be, I'll try to go a little slow tonight because there's new members aboard, and I'm sure it's a nervous evening for them, being new and not knowing the process. But we do run these meetings in accordance with parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules of Order. As part of your onboarding, you're gonna get some training, and you'll get some books, some material, Robert's Rules of Order, brief, I guess a book, just a book and a card?
Right.
Okay. And then you also get the Massachusetts General Laws, a compilation of that that's relevant to school committees. So at this time, we need a vote, a motion and a vote of the committee to open nominations for Chair.
So move.
Give a motion in a second to open nominations of Chair. All those, any deliberation on that? All those in agreement, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions? Okay, nominations for Chair are open.
I'd like to nominate Sean.
Okay, with one nomination for the current Chair. Are there other, are there any nominations for Chair? So, so I plead, pleaded with the committee, consider a new Chair. I've been doing this for six years, but I'm honored and privileged to take it on for another year. I just encourage everyone to continue watching what happens during the course of the meeting, and maybe next year, we can have a change of leadership.
Okay.
So at this time, we have, if only one nominee, we have, we have to vote on the nominee, and then Mr. Bueno, we'll pass these up to him, and we'll, we'll take the vote. And since there's only one nominee, you can discard the other blue ballot. This is one.
Thank you all votes and one extension.
Yeah, 'cause I'm the extension.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, and I'll do my best for the following year to serve the committee. It's always an honor and privilege.
Thank you very much.
Okay, can, we open nominations?
I'd like to nominate Dick Locatell for Vice Chair.
Okay, with motion in a second to nominate Dick Locatell for Vice Chair. Are there any, not, any other nominations? Okay, then, I forgot last time, but we need to vote to close nominations to for Vice Chair. I always forget that part. So remember, please make a motion to close nominations for Vice Chair.
So move.
All those in favor of closing nominations for Vice Chair?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Okay, the nomination process is closed. You lucked out because we were gonna nominate you for Chair.
I guess so.
Timing is everything.
I guess.
Alright, um, I just, yes. So Mike, we're gonna read you the oath.
Oh, absolutely. All right.
Ready?
Absolutely. Is that a vote?
I?
Aye.
Do solemnly swear in firm.
Do solemnly swear in firm.
That I will speak with in firm. Discharge and disprove all of these.
Discharge?
In covenant upon me as a school community.
In covenant upon me. I will speak with.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
If I'm.
According to the best of my abilities and my understanding. Agreeably?
Agreeably.
The rules and regulations?
The rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution?
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth?
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Well, go forward.
Thank you very much. Thanks for having me. My apologies.
Okay, sure. It's fine. Mike, welcome aboard. Before we continue, I'd just like the new members to introduce themselves to the committee. I forgot to do that early on. So Mike, start with you.
Sure. Absolutely. Hello, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Michael Hinckley. I was born and raised here in Dalton, and graduated from Wacona. I then went on and lived out of the area for several years, even before moving back in 2002. I have two children, one who is a freshman in college, and my son, Michael, is in fifth grade at Craneville, and hoping to have him at the new Wacona High School. He's on the road. And the last thing I would say is, thank you very much for everyone's support. This is something that I've wanted to do for quite some time, and I really appreciate the opportunity to contribute, and hopefully bring some value to this group. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Todd Emerson from Covington. Actually grew up in Williamsburg, but I've been in Covington for 25 years. I have five students, or five children that have been students in the district. Two have graduated, one in Wacona, one in Nessakis, and one in Craneville. Really excited about the new school, and I'm glad to represent Covington here on the school committee.
Great, thank you.
Lovely to have you.
Thank you.
I'm Rob DeFazio from Dalton. I lived in Dalton for 10 years. I have a sixth grader in Nessakis, and twins in Craneville right now. It's great to be here, and thank you for suggesting me.
Well, thank you. Pleased to have you all aboard the committee.
Thank you.
So, Vice Chair?
Thirteen.
Okay, good. Welcome aboard again.
Thank you. Congrats.
Congratulations.
Dick would like to make, to say a few words before we continue.
Yeah, I just, thank you for your votes of confidence. The Vice Chair and the Chair have occasions to meet, to prepare the agenda, and we converse every so often, and I want to say that Sean is clearly, his number one priority is the kids, which should be everybody else's priority as well. But also, his is the district, and he is concerned about the progress of the Central Berkshire Regional School District. I share those. After that, the two of us are concerned about the committee. We want this to be an outstanding committee, to be very productive and efficient, and to get into issues that we should be into, and stay out of issues that we shouldn't be into. And occasionally, Sean and I get along very, very well, but we do, our mission is the same, but how we get there is often different. And we do have discussions, which I think are productive and helpful to the committee. So we had the same situation last year, and I hope this year is just as productive and useful.
Thank you. Thank you, Dick. Okay, the next order of business, and by the way, I share the sentiments. I've said a couple times so far that Dick's actually been my mentor. When I came onto the committee, however many years, nine years ago, I was thrust into Chair a couple years into that process, and Dick served as a great puppet on and, you know, trying to guide me through the process. So I appreciate everything that he's done to help keep the committee moving along and the district moving forward. The next order of business is appointment of District Secretary. Would a member please make the motion?
May it resolve that Lori Kazna be appointed District Secretary through November 2019?
We have a motion in a second for appointment of District Secretary. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
Be resolved that Michael Kinney be appointed District Treasurer through November 2019?
We have a motion in a second for appointment of District Treasurer. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
It resolve that Murphy, Hess, Toomey, and Lahane, LLP, be appointed Special Education Legal Counsel for the Central Berkshire Regional School District from December 1, 2018 to November 30, 2019?
Second.
We have a motion in a second for appointment of the legal counsels for the district. Please note that Ducrey Law Offices was appointed General Legal Counsel for the district July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019. So is there any discussion about this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
Be it resolved that Dr. Betsy Belade be appointed Physician for Central Berkshire Regional School District from December 1, 2018 to November 30, 2019?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for appointment of physician for the school district. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
Stain.
One extension. Motion carries. Okay, that's through most of the motions for the reorganization of the committee, so thanks for, for your indulgence in this part of the process. For Subcommittee Trump, I want to note a few things first. You all received the conflict of interest overview here, and you have to sign a form, so when you get a chance to read this, you don't have to do it tonight, but I think you have, what was it, 30 days?
10 days.
10 days. You have 10 days to read this, sign it, and get it back to Mr. Bueno at Central Office. I did mention training already, but Mike, for your, for your benefit, you will be doing some training at some point in time. I'd like to get together with the three committee members, and I'll take you through. We have a standard packet that we, we go through with every committee member to try to introduce you to the committee, you know, how, how we operate through the year, and what our, the relevant topics are right now. You'll also be, become a member of Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and Mr. Bueno takes care of registering you and that. You'll be able to get access to the website. There's going to be what they call Charting the Course training that's coming up. That's required by law. You have to take that within a year of, of entering the school committee. So they, they have these sessions on a pretty regular basis all around the state. They typically have one at this end of the state at some point in time. It's often been in spring. It's been at Lee, Lee High School, but, yeah. So we'll, we'll try to, you know, stay on the lookout for those, and when you get a chance to go on their website, they'll tell you there as well. Great. And then you can register for it on the website, and then attend a session that's planned for a full day, but they often finish in four or five hours, depending on how many questions there are. But they take, they take you through the whole, the whole process as well. Ours, ours, our orientation is brief. It's probably an hour or two. So you meet with myself, and Superintendent Kazza, and we'll try to do that before the next meeting. So when you get a chance, oh, you also receive a district email address. I recommend using that rather than your home email, because any emails that happen between you and the district, or members, for whatever reason, become public domain. Okay? Very good. So let's see, Subcommittee Preferences. We, we have several subcommittees. We have Finance, Curriculum, Policy, and Finance, and Technology. You'll all be given an opportunity to choose which Subcommittee that you want to be on, and you sometimes have to split the difference. We try not, we definitely try not to have more than seven people on a Subcommittee. Otherwise, we're gonna be in violation of Open Reading Law, having, you know, eight members of the school committee there, if that's what it was. So we purposely try to stay away from that. We try to balance all the subcommittees. Right now, we normally do this now, but right now, the, the Policy Subcommittee is reviewing all the subcommittees and considering some changes. So I want to hold off on that. We're gonna, what we'll do is, we'll maintain the current subcommittees, and I'll try to see what we have for seats, take a look at what's there, and I forgot to ask you, Greg, to bring the list of who's on the subcommittees with you, but maybe you can send that out to the whole committee. And we'll at least try to get you placed for now, but we're hoping to have this resolved by next month, Mike?
January.
By January. Okay.
Great.
Okay, sorry for the delay in this, but at this time, we'll accept responses from the audience. Does anyone want to address the school committee? Roberta, just state your name and what town you're from.
My name is Roberta McCullough-Deuce, and I am a resident of Hinsdale. Good evening. As I've stated my name, and that I'm a resident of Hinsdale, I come before you tonight to share my thoughts on a subject that I honestly wish I didn't have to speak on. But there is a greater good at stake. As some of you may have known from recent media reports, there has been a spotlight on an unfortunate incident that occurred at my daughter's school. It centered around an exclusionary remark solely based on race. Sadly, this isn't her first exposure to this. The first episode happened when she was in kindergarten, and a little boy said he didn't play with brown people. Imagine navigating your identity at five. Both of my sons, one of whom no longer is in the district, has experienced their own racial and bias-related incidents. To the credit of the school and the superintendent, it was always promptly addressed. And this is important to acknowledge. In speaking with parents from other districts, they shared experiences ranging from tepid responses to outright dismissals regarding bias-related problems that had occurred. From my conversations with our schools' past and current principals, and the superintendent, I have not experienced this. I firmly believe that there is a genuine desire to address these issues. In the wake of an incident concerning my younger son, who was in elementary school at the time, I know that a grant was secured to bring in a performer who talked to the students about differences. It was a good event, and it served to help those kids who were there. The principal's newsletter, which is shared with parents via hard copy and email, has also emphasized the kind of community that we strive to be, and the actions that reflect a welcoming place for all. But again, after these kids moved on, there was nothing in place for those coming in afterward. The fact that these kinds of incidents continue to repeat themselves is an indication that something greater is needed to help our young people. Difference in and of itself is not a bad thing. Labels, stereotypes, and preconceived notions foster negativity and division. That said, I believe we have an opportunity at this very moment to define who we will be as a school community, and prepare young learners to be global citizens. We do them no favors by not preparing them for this. While I fully understand that schools can't change everything, there is enormous potential to help students along this journey. I believe that we must move beyond actions that simply remedy a particular situation. I am advocating for the implementation of something far more sustainable that reflects an integral anti-bias program throughout the district. If there are questions as how to get this work started, an advisory committee should be formed to help develop recommendations and provide thoughtful clarity. Change is possible, and I believe it can start now. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberta.
Thank you, reporter.
And, Roberta, you referenced an advisory committee. That, the intention for that was to be county-wide?
I believe that it can start, it, it's, it's a, that's a big, that's a big perspective. I think it's important to start small and then grow, and then I think that CBRSD can serve as a benchmark for other districts in the county. I think that it is sort of put in our heads in the sand to pretend that there isn't a problem. I think you can look away, that doesn't erase the problem, it just means you don't see it any longer. So I think that it's important to recognize that even in homogenous communities, when our students leave here, they're gonna enter a world, a community, a society, that reflects people who don't look like them. So I think it's important that young people understand that from an early age, understand how to interact with other people, because not only does that benefit them as students, but it also benefits them as employees, as future leaders, whoever they may be in life. So we really have to take a proactive approach to helping them, not only from an academic standpoint, but also from a socio-emotional standpoint. And that allows them, one, to be better students, I think, because it broadens their perspectives. But I think if you start small, and then you, and then make it grow, it has to be sustainable, and it has to be built in, because when this administration leaves, and another administration comes in, and someone will say, "Well, this is not important to us, let's shelve it," well then, there it goes. So how do you create something that transcends particular preferences? It has to be built in and sustainable.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the committee?
Did you hear that? Could you repeat the comment?
Can we get you on the school committee?
The advisory council.
I, I am more than happy. I didn't realize there were any additional seats, but I, I'm more than willing to be a part of it. I realize that in order to be a part of change and solutions, you have to be a part of it. And if you steps, if you allow yourselves to stay on the sidelines, then you're only watching. So I don't know if you guys have any room. I don't know. You guys just went through a whole voting process, but I, I wanted to make myself available for anything that you might need from this point on, because this is very important, not just to my children, but those who will come afterwards, and for our children today. We have to think about their emotional well-being, and, and this is a part of it. We have to think about that, because the world that we're in, we really need to understand that we're all in this together, and we have to know how to navigate that, and it starts with them.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, but I've dialogued with her probably extensively. We could talk for a long, long time, right?
Alright.
I wanted to get home safely as well.
Thank you, Roberta. Appreciate you coming out tonight.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And we did have her captive for a while on the school building committee, but Roberta's a very busy person. Okay, the next order of business is Student Affairs. We have with us this evening, and for all.
I'd like to comment, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm from Dalton, and I just want to say I support what Roberta proposes, and I think there's very little disagreement with this being important. It's important that a child in school not be subjected to the kinds of actions or speech that we hear about. They don't deserve to have that. And the kids who fling the hateful speech, or whatever they do, they could grow up to be much better people if they learned otherwise.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience?
Cheryl Rose, Dalton, also. I guess just to follow up, obviously, I'm here to support Roberta as well, in this whole idea, and I hope you will consider moving forward on forming some kind of advisory group to actually move this forward, so it doesn't just become this moment that we're all nodding our heads. Okay, thank you.
So I want to take, to wait till I do my report, just because I don't want to cause confusion, but we were very fortunate that we were awarded, we were one of the districts. So I keep talking about how Mrs. Pecore and I have been waiting and waiting. We were awarded a grant from the state for a social-emotional learning grant to look at equity and diversity, and what it requires is, it requires advise, it steer, they call it steering committees, but advisory committees in each building, and then a district level one. And it has to have community membership. Roberta's nodding. We have our first community member. So yes, but we've got some, some funding and some resources, and we have people coming forward who can participate. So we will, we will be in touch, because if you could participate on the district level one, I think that would really be, be very powerful.
I would like to.
Excellent, thank you.
Great. Mike?
I'd just like to add very briefly, three things. Roberta, thank you very much. Secondly, I'll keep my remarks brief, because I could not articulate that nearly as well as you did. Thank you. But thirdly, I'd just like to say that I'd be happy to participate, both as a member of the school committee and a citizen of this community, for all the reasons that you articulated so well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any else? Okay, we'll hand over the floor to Hannah.
Alright. So, on October 30th, Wacona's National Honor Society inducted its new junior and senior members. We are excited to begin working as a larger group, and we will be hosting our annual Emmy Gold Dinner this Sunday. It's a very fun event, and I recommend attending if you are available. On November 1st, Wacona's youth high basketball team won their game, which is very exciting. Our cheer, our cheer team has also been doing very well. They had two competitions, one on October 27th, and one on November 3rd, and they placed first to both of them. And then at their state competition this past Sunday, they placed second and received a bid nationals, which they are very excited about. Wacona's football team won their most recent game on the 19th, and they will advance to play in their next game this Saturday, West, in Westfield. And then finally, Wacona's Appalachian players presented their play Night at the Wax Museum this past weekend, which was very fun. I enjoyed watching it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Hannah? Okay, thank you. Now the superintendent has an award?
Oh, yes. Highlight of the evening. I did, I did, I did. Hi, I'm good? Oh, I know. I'm good. We've done this a few times now, but this one is especially exciting. So I am so, this is one of the highlights of, of my year, and I have an incredibly, I was debating whether or not to call her a young woman or not, but that's a compliment, so an incredible woman, that I am able to give this award for. And I can certainly tell you about how she's a member of the Appalachian Players, and a National Honor Society member, and she contributes to our school building committee, and she is an incredible pianist, that if you have heard her play, it is absolutely striking, and one of the highlights every year when I'm able to do so. But the most important thing, she has one of the most incredible energies that just radiates from her, and is, is so powerful of positivity, and has been such a wonderful student to get to know and to work with. So I am so honored to give this award to Anna Dequette. It is an award that I'm able to give to a top performing student in the class, and there's some decision-making that goes into really identifying someone who represents what Anna does. So I hope she continues to use her amazing voice in many capacities, and, and lean into the work like she does as she goes forth in life, because she will be incredibly successful, and anyone who has the opportunity to get to know her will be incredibly better for it. So congratulations, and thank you for everything you've done. (Inaudible) for you. Wonderful. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anna, and congratulations to the whole family.
Thank you. (Laughter) Good show, Mr. Rob. On Twitter now.
I gotta remember to do a light on that one. Okay, the next order of business is the secretary's report. Would a member please make a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting of October 25th, 2018, and a note first that the meeting minutes are in the packet for new members.
Move to accept the minutes of the regular meeting of October 25th, 2018 as printed.
We have a motion in a second to accept the minutes of the October 25th meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries. The next order of business is financial report. In front of you, you should have the, the warrants. Would a member please dispense the warrants? Would a member please dispense the warrants?
Move to approve warrant number PR 2019-9 dated November 1st, 2018, payroll in the amount of $630,143.87.
We have a motion and a second to approve warrant number PR 2019-9. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
Stayed.
Three extensions, the motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR 2019-9D dated November 1st, 2018, accounts payable in the amount of $114,337.32.
We have a motion and a second to approve warrant number PR 2019-9 Delta. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions?
Stayed.
One extension, the motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number AP 2019-9 dated November 9th, 2018, accounts payable in the amount of $305,226.50.
We have a motion and a second to approve warrant number AP 2019-9. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
Stayed.
One extension, the motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR 2019-10 dated November 15th, 2018, payroll in the amount of $623,688.75.
We have a motion and a second to approve warrant number PR 2019-10. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
Stayed.
Two extensions, the motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR 2019-10D dated November 15th, 2018, accounts payable in the amount of $112,188.12.
We have a motion and a second to approve warrant number PR 2019-10 Delta. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
Stayed.
One extension, the motion carries. Okay, that'll be it for the warrants this evening. We have two donations. Would a member please make the motions?
Be resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accept the donation of $2,000 to the Wakona Regional High School gift account for Wakona Regional High School's robotics from General Dynamics, as recommended by the district treasurer.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for a donation to Wakona Robotics. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? The motion carries.
Do you... Do you resolve that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accept the donation of $570 to the Nesekus Regional Middle School gift account for the Nesekus Makerspace from General Dynamics through Mark Dossi, as recommended by the district treasurer?
Okay, we have a motion and a second for a donation to Nesekus Makerspace. Is there any discussion?
Yes, do we send a thank you for our business?
Good. Thank you. No more discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries. The next order of business is communications report to the chair. We still have a town of Washington, school committee vacancy. That position is not due for reelection until 2020, but if there's, we know of anyone who would like to be appointed to the committee, that would be the process from this point forward for the next two years.
I brought that up to this other meeting.
Okay, we'll keep working it. And the next order of business is a motion for approval of the Craneville Literacy Library. Would a member please make the motion?
It resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves naming the literacy library at Craneville Elementary School, the Morrison Literacy Center.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval to name the Craneville Literacy Library, the Morrison Literacy Center, and the superintendent would like to make a restatement on that.
Sure, so most of you were here when Mr. Therian, who's one of our teachers in the district, and a community member and a parent, made a donation. He is the executor of the estate for his aunt, who's a very long-term teacher at Craneville, and he made a pretty substantial donation of $10,000 to Craneville to establish a literacy library, consistent with the ones we have at Kittredge and Beckett, and his request was that it be named in her honor.
Okay, so is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries. Soon we will notify Mr. Therian.
We will, we'll be thrilled.
I did have another topic that's not on here tonight, but I think it's relevant that I bring it up. Last June, the committee received an open meeting law complaint from a citizen in Peru. We went through the process, our attorney guided us through it, and we responded to it, saying that we disagreed with the complaint. Well, the complaint then filed, as they can, with the AGO, the Attorney General's office. And we just received a letter from the AGO's office that they denied the complaint, that they said that it was not an open meeting law violation. So, that, did you send that out to the...
I sent you, but I can forward it.
Yeah, so Greg will forward that to the entire committee, so you have that for the record. So, thank goodness, that's behind us. And moving forward, subcommittee reports and recommendations, we'll begin with curriculum.
Thank you. We met tonight before this meeting, and we had a very lofty agenda, and unfortunately we ran out of time, but we kind of were prepared for that, and we're going to schedule another meeting so that we can continue with the very good discussion that we had. But first, we approve the school calendar for 2019, 2020. If anybody has that down there, yes. There's a correction on it, December 30th. Always remember that date. So, the committee... See, do I have to say that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, it is all that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approved the 2019, 2020 school year calendar as presented and as recommended by the curriculum subcommittee.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of the 2019, 2020 school calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries.
Thank you. And then, we began our discussion, and this is a topic that we're going to have repeatedly, but it will be considered analysis of data, and we started with Nesekus. And Lori and Leslie began discussions with us, and really dug deep to see exactly what's going on, and where the areas, specific areas of deficit are. And we didn't get too far, but we did understand a lot better, thank you Lori and Leslie, really shedding some light to the areas of difficulty. And we will continue. We have scheduled a meeting for the next school committee meeting, but I have to change that, so I'll send out a notice to our committee to see if we can reschedule. And we will, again, at that time, discuss the math program and the born data related to that.
Okay. Is that it for your report?
That's it for my report.
Are there any questions for Barbara? Okay, we'll move on to finance.
The finance committee has not met since our last meeting.
Okay, thank you. Next is policy.
Okay, so, policy met last night, and also on October 1st. I'm going to skip to B first, which is school committee self-evaluation. The last meeting, everybody received the scores showing previous year plus these current years' scoring in our evaluation. What you did not receive was, were the comments that were made. I do want to say that the comments that were made were very productive, and really thoughtful and positive towards the strides that this committee has made. Rich Peters is going to take last year's comments and this year's comments, and take a look and see if there's any trends we need to kind of be aware of, of comments that did come up. One that we did note last night was our district...
Public relations.
Public relations strategy for our school. So, we will dig a little bit deeper into that, and bring forward to this committee some of those trends that we've seen over the past two years. Also, at that meeting, last two meetings, we discussed the creation of a potential new subcommittee. The subcommittee, so we were tasked by Chairman Amorcos to look into the following three areas, to decide if they should fall within a current subcommittee, or if they were warranted to creation of an ad hoc subcommittee or a permanent committee for this district. So, the areas of consideration for everybody here to, that included student and staff's staff safety and security of school property and school buses, the environmental impacts on student learning, and on the student and staff comfort within the buildings, and the social environment in each of our schools. So, we had some really good discussion on October 1st, and also last night with regards to these issues. Last night being the most recent to discuss, and what we should do with them. They're obviously important issues that we need to kind of keep in the forefront of our planning discussion as a district. I think while it'd be easiest, and we talked about this, to just put these areas within other subcommittees, we felt that they may not be given attention that they really should deserve by our district. So, with that being said, we are going to be meeting, I believe, November 26th is what we're going to agree upon at 6:00, to look at our bylaws and the charters of our current subcommittees, look at restructuring some of those charters within the subcommittees. We discussed last night potentially removal of the technology subcommittee, and moving those responsibilities within finance and curriculum. I will, actually, you know what, I will actually pass this out. So, what I'm passing out is actually the charter from our bylaws. Actually, did I have one of those? So, these, so what's being passed out is standing committees and their charters. So, with technology, we felt that we could put these three areas within other subcommittees. So, we will be at the next school committee meeting, bringing forward a first reading to change the bylaws as it stands with the standing committees and their charters, and assigning and looking at where technology, the three pieces of technology could live within the subcommittees. We do not have a name for this current subcommittee, we're working on that. If anybody here has a recommendation based upon the three topics that we've brought up, we would love to hear that. But again, we feel that these three topics, student-staff safety and security of school property, school buses, the environmental impacts on student learning, and on student-staff comfort, and the social environment in each of our schools are three important topics that this committee, with a subcommittee, should really focus on. We really should not bury those important topics within other subcommittees. So, that's my report.
Okay. Are there any questions for Ms. Greg?
I just have a comment that what we heard earlier from students, I mean, ties right into the... We probably should have spoken up earlier, but I think this is perfect timing.
Sure.
I think there is a good idea to, you know, to work with technology, because we've done our job when technology was, you know, really starting to come into the district, you know, the whole plan in the right direction, and now that's there and established, and the, you know, school district can handle on its own, that's probably a very good idea for, you know, expand it and move the functions to other areas.
Yeah, I think that's what some of us talked about last night, is we've, you know, we've made it a long way with technology, you know, between the administration and the subcommittee overseeing some of them, trying to set priorities. I agree. We're in a good place right now.
I'll just add one comment on the, going back to the views. We have two years of data now in the comments, so the point of looking at it is to see if we can come up with actionable items, if there's repeats, trends. The one that we mentioned is clearly, just getting up is people don't really know about our plan. So, you know, try and formulate an action item on that, so it's educated everybody. So, I'll look for those same trends, and I'll all questions, and see if we can come up with actionable items.
Okay, were you going to send that out to the rest of the committee and share the comments, discrete comments?
We can.
Okay, that'd be good.
Absolutely. Send the last two years.
That'd be great. So, the one thing, Rich, I'm glad you brought that up, is the one thing I'd like to do as chair, is try to look at that, and maybe you can too, to see if there's opportunities for training.
Yes.
Because we did defer, we usually have a retreat in October. We decided to defer that, because it makes more sense with new people onboarding, that it'd be best to put that off, and have a new committee, if you will, being trained. Okay, personnel?
No report.
Okay, technology.
We didn't try to meet, but having trouble putting together a forum. Hopefully, or I was hoping to have a report on shared services, we lose it Friday, but I'm going to try to put together a meeting for either December, Monday, December 3rd, Monday, December 10th, and get everyone on the shared services, plus a few other items that I have for on the agenda.
Okay.
And for the new people here, I want to encourage you to get away from paper and bring a laptop, or bring a Chromebook here, because everything that is presented to us is available electronically, can be emailed by Greg, or is available on the websites. So, I encourage everyone to start doing that as well, too, so we do not fill a tree of a meeting.
Good stuff.
I'll try to set a good example, because I usually bring my iPad, and I'm here a baker.
Never even thought of that.
All right, so, look forward to me noticing the...
All right, thank you, John. All right, Wakona Building Project, I asked Lori to give the presentation on that this evening, but I guess the two things that I wanted to cover was, we were going through, right now, they're at the next level of their design, they showed us a real sketch of the school. They also discussed the lead silver, which is an environmental, I guess, methodology that I'd rather, I guess I'd put it that way, that they want to follow, and we get points from the MSBA, so we get reimbursement for that moving forward. We heard from the Dalton Green Committee, they're pushing us to try to go to net zero, so we had a good discussion back and forth on that, pros and cons. We did vote to accept lead silver, which is one step above lead certified. Lead certified is the minimum requirement that MSBA demands for all new school buildings, so we're going, we're overachieving a little bit, and we said that we just want to take a look at lead gold as well, because that's one step higher, but you don't get any extra points for that. So, that would be an extra expense to the district, really, for no gain, except for environmentally, which is, of course, important. We also asked, we also asked DRA, their architect, to take a look at a couple different options with the costing of the net zero energy, and as well as adding a geothermal system, rather than fossil fuel burning. And then, we also had a vote on the CM at risk, that's the construction management at risk, to go with that type of management and design process, rather than kind of a serial process, it's much more efficient. It's a more collaborative process between the construction side and the design side, so that was approved by the school building committee as well. And I don't think I can remember anything else from that. Do you want to add?
The only thing that...
Oh, that's correct.
Is the, we did set the dates for community events in March, March 5th and March 7th, March 5th at Wakona in Windsor, March 7th at Kittredge and Beckett, Washington, but we will send out plenty of notification around those, if you're able to participate. Was the...
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that? Okay, school health and wellness.
Okay, so, I'm just going to give you guys a report. The wellness committee met, I don't know the exact date, but sometime in October, and I want to give a follow-up on the discussion that we had last spring about the changes in physical education at Wakona, because this year, they started a new schedule, whereas prior to this year, PE was offered every other day. prior to this year, PE was offered every other day, year-round. But beginning this year, they changed the model so that the classes were offered every day, and pipe in if I've got this wrong, are offered every day, but students are only required to take it one semester per year. This allows students to choose more electives, including some of the arts and drama courses that are offered at Wakona. In doing this, there have also been some other electives added around wellness, including yoga and stress management, lifetime PE and personal wellness. Carrie Mason, who is, what's her exact title?
Physical wellness coordinator.
Physical wellness coordinator, reported on some of the changes she had made, and I'll probably ask Lori to pipe in as to how they're tracking. I think some of the concerns around this were that some kids might opt out of PE, they could almost do it back-to-back, like spring semester and the fall semester, and have a full year of inactivity. The rationale behind it is most kids are active and most kids are involved in sports, extracurricular, but what about those kids who don't do anything? And is this promoting maybe an escape to be inactive? So I think we discussed at a meeting, you know, what steps were going to be taken to make sure that some kids didn't slip through the cracks, and I think between Carrie and Lori and Mr. Robb, we outlined some steps they've taken, and I probably will defer to you to detail those.
You did a great job with it. So I spent a conversation since I, since I arrived here. Wakona was fairly unique at the state level in that they did offer PE in a way that it was offered all year. Most people don't offer every other day classes at the high school level. There's a multitude of concerns around them. They restrict kids' schedules, there's concerns that kids don't take those classes as seriously, there's some concerns about the gap in learning when you're only taking an every other day class. Those concerns have been brought forth to us by the teachers, by students who want more opportunities to participate in the arts for quite some time. So when the schedule was changed, as we reviewed at school committee to align so Nescus and Wakona were able to share staff, we did do away with every other day classes. There wasn't a change to the classes, but they no longer met every other day. There were several concerns with every other day classes. We talked a little bit about the AP classes that were meeting every other day, we, we talked about a few different aspects, but the one that got some concern was the change to physical education. We now are aligned with what the majority of the state does. Some people do less than us, that is, is acceptable. So the state law is that students in grades one through 12 have to be required to take PE every year. There's no requirement as to how much, so that could be a quarter, that could be a semester. There's some unique things going on at the state level. There's no requirement to the format. So one of the concerns though that came forth is exactly what Nicole said, you know, I don't think anyone disagreed with access to the arts. We have a very athletically driven population and really giving students the opportunity to take classes that are of interest in other areas, but what about and how many students are not physically active? Because really, Carrie's goal is, as I think all our PE teachers and health teachers, is that students really are physically active and that they generalize that, that they'll take that on as a lifetime activity beyond high school. So what Carrie did after the concerns from last year is she surveyed all of the students. And what she found was in the data, she had students identify, are you, first of all, you can take more than one semester of PE, that's absolutely an option, but if you're not taking more than one semester of PE, what are you involved in? So amongst the, the ninth grade class, she found that 98% were able to identify that they were either participating in a sport, because 65% of our kids actually participate in sports at Wakona, we have a very high percentage, or they're doing something like they take dance classes, or they're, they're doing something like they figure skate. They were able to identify something of substance, you know, not that I occasionally take a stroll down my street, something of substance. 100% of grade 10, 100% of grade 11, and 96% of grade 12. What she then did is she came up with a system of how is she going to, A, in case, you know, you say you figure skate and then you quit midway through the, the semester, or you don't have an activity, how will that be tracked? So there's three things they're doing. They're sending home informational sheets to families identifying physical wellness options in the community, but specifically addressing them to families of students who are not active. In addition to that, any student, so again, every family's getting information, but you're getting a letter if your child's not involved in PE and does not have a formal physical activity outside of school, and if you're not formally involved in a physical activity outside of school, Carrie's meeting with you individually to talk about a wellness plan. So, you know, I do think that the benefits, I, I feel strongly that Carrie has the best interests of kids when it comes to wellness at, at heart and feels, feels confident that this model is, is beneficial for the kids overall with minimal negative impact that we're able to mitigate through the steps she's taken. So that's kind of where we're at, but it's an ongoing dialogue. I do question if some of these options, it's more of a universally designed PE class, I'd say, they're still following the standards, but they're universally designing it. I've been to a couple of them and I would sign up for two semesters and I would not have said that about the PE class I took in high school. So I'm wondering if it will catch on, that we might, so I'll bring the data back again when we look at it second semester, I'll, I'll give it to Nicole.
Okay, thank you. Are there any, any questions? All right, we'll move on to superintendent's reports and recommendations.
So the, the majority of my report, like Mr. Les said, can be accessed online and there is digital components of it. The superintendent update, I told you that was something I had done in response to survey data I had gotten to address some of the areas I thought could be stronger, really just getting that factual information out. They like the newsletter, it's interesting to hear about what's happening district-wide, but sometimes they really just want to hear what are the facts? Has somebody resigned? They'll want to know, are there new school committee members? So I've been doing a monthly update, so if you click on the link, you'll be able to, to read that in full. The newsletters go onto our website, so you can always access them there. They're more the magazine version of what's happening in the district, so I did link that as well. The, the inclusive practices, I am so excited that Annie and I were awarded this grant. We were, were really kind of sold on it, that we had a need for it. Roberta's comments tonight furthered that, as, as well as many other people who are not able to speak in a public session in that capacity. And so really what it requires, it's a $20,000 grant in year one, there'll be another component in year two. We have to form building, first step is, we have to form building-based committees, and then we have to form a district-wide committee. And it really, the first step is to administer a survey that's going to look at all of these different kinds of things, equity and bias issues, as well as access to things like families' access to resources around healthcare due to socioeconomic differences. It is, is one of the most robust tools I've seen to look at all aspects of challenges beyond the classroom and some within that students and families face. So the other thing that's nice is we, we tend to tap into the same people over and over again for some things, and this, these committees really need a different group. So I'll give you an example, we were forming some ideas around the different people who need to, to participate. I'm gonna ask Jeff Coe to participate at the District One. I'm gonna ask Allison Peters, there he is, a school committee member, Roberta. And then as well, you know, like our leader of our Gay-Straight Alliance will be a member of Wakona's and likely there'll be a, a representation from that group on the District One. So lots of different kinds of people will have an opportunity to get involved at the building ones, in the district one, and then the other thing that we're looking at is, there are really two equity and diversity curriculums that are kind of the, the top two Leslie and I have identified. One is through the ADL, the Anti-Defamation League, it's called a Classroom of Differences. The other one is through Wellesley College, and it's the CED, it's Seeking Educational Equity and Diversity. So we're gonna be vetting those two programs to look at which ones are better fit for our needs, and we'll be able to use some of the funding for that. And they all really look closely at race, religion, nationality, gender, sexual preference, all of the different areas that we're concerned with for equity and diversity. So that will hopefully, that work will start with forming the committees this, this month. Administering the survey is gonna be pretty extensive because it's administered in every building, plus at a district level, and then it's obviously analyzed for us and we're given the kind of reports for us to then do some analysis with. So I hope to have that data in the spring to really drive the grant for the fall. Does that make sense? So we've really got to get some hard data on this because I know there's a lot of other voices out there who don't speak up, and hopefully this will, will, will help us with that. So that's that. I, I listed, you see, Mrs. Duquette, there she is, but there's our, there's our students who received the John Abigail Adams scholarship. Oh, is Hannah here? Hannah, I'm not gonna do this justice, were you there when Matt Whitcomb came?
I was not.
So I, I wasn't there, so I've heard great things about it, but he's an alumni of, of Wakona, Olympic Nordic ski coach and came back and it was, it gave some, some really inspiring messages to the students at Wakona. So if you are familiar with him or you heard at all about that, I've heard good things, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And then, I think that's pretty much my report.
John Abigail Adams.
Oh, yep, John Abigail Adams. So the list of all the students are there, who did, and we do know that that's, it gives the students the tuition for statewide, for state colleges. And I think that's all I have. Any questions though? About anything, or I know there's been a lot of conversation, you know, Roberta has said a lot of things better than I certainly could right now, but this is an, an ongoing concern, and it's an ongoing issue at the, every level. So in every, every district, some of you have probably read the, the story out of Framingham, and it's just, I was down at the Cape at the superintendent's conference, it's the number one concern on the, the mind of I think every, every superintendent down there and most human beings. So we're fortunate to have some resources, we're fortunate to have some incredible resources in the county. I've also made some connections in Boston Public that I think are really, will be very, very useful for us as well in guiding some of our work and making sure we have the capacity. I think that's another thing we have to be honest about is making sure that we have the capacity to address these things and to, to make good decisions around them.
So, it's kind of, I, I know that with the, with the Dues family, there's been, you know, we've had a lot of discussion and it's been in the, they were on the radio the other day and in the paper. What is, and we're, having this grant and doing this training is great for the kids and keep it ongoing, but what is, I mean, but let's face it, if the second grader, third grader is coming into school and making these comments, they're not hearing it at school, it's coming from home. So as much as we can try to teach our children in school better, I mean, the odds are that when they go back home and they're still hearing the same language, it's, it's not going to connect very well. Is there anything that we're doing or that can be done to try to reach those families that are, I mean, they're contributing to this, they're making it difficult?
Well, there's, there's, I mean, I, I'll say something and I don't want to be very politically driven because that's not necessarily my intent, but I did hear a comment from a superintendent in a, a very large, very diverse district who said that the excuse no longer is the dog ate my homework, but the president said it. And literally disciplining students who are being disciplined for making comments towards other students, and they're saying, but so-and-so said it, and so-and-so is in a position of power, and so is there a family component to this? Yes. Do I also think there's, there's other components as well? We have had a, you know, whether or not it's, it's transparent or not, I don't know, but we have had families at times say, I don't know, I can't, you know, and we've had actually families that have dialogued with, with the family that was here representing tonight, who really are, are friendly and say, eh, and we've got a, a climate issue in our society and then there are issues in the homes. So any, any community, any kind of action around this, any equity and diversity training will say to you, this has to be a sustained community effort over time. That is also in the reality of the political climate we're living in. So a sustained community effort, knowing that that the dog ate my homework is now the president said it, could still come into school and, and be said. We have not seen as much of that, that kind of, you know, I, when the person said it, I said, you really hear? I, yeah, we hear that regularly, that's a regular response.
You're a product of your environment. The best thing we can do to answer that question that you posed is to make this environment more powerful than the one they have at home. And we're positive. Let's do that.
I mean, because negatives, I wanted to let Mrs. Dues have the floor, but, I mean, it's hard having that conversation with a, a second grader that people hate you just because you don't look like, believe like, are like them. I mean, in my household, we're a mixed religious household, my Victoria knows that mommy's Jewish and that we celebrate all of the holidays. So when she stuck down, while I was watching CNN while the Charleston rallies were happening and she saw what they were saying, just that realization on her face, it's a very hard conversation to have with a child to what the, that they realize that people are just gonna hate them just because.
And like John just said, the other piece of it is, so one of my colleagues who does some incredible work in a, a district in Metro West, David Sommergras, who I know you've heard of, about seven, eight years ago in the district he's from, he started something called, it's like the Diversity Summit, it's a celebration of diversity. They did it in response to antisemitic behavior. And it's this incredible group that, that does all of this work, it's a community, it's the superintendent is there and other educators, but it's the community that does it, he does it as a community member. And they had an incident in May with swastikas written on one of their buildings, and they've been doing this.
That they're doing in the world today.
Yeah, so sometimes there's, even when you spend, there's, he, there's sometimes even there's an uptick when you're doing more, because then you're, you're seen as vulnerable or people target, but like John said, we just have to continue again and again and again sustained effort with as many people on board as we can possibly get and look at not only explicit but implicit biases, which sometimes are harder. But I do think that increasing our own capacity, confidence, and ability to educate, to empower, and to respond to when we have to. Certain things are hate, hate language in saying that, it's hate speech. We're very comfortable saying that's bullying, sometimes we need to be just as comfortable calling something hate speech if that's what it is. So we do have, I think, great partners to do this work with, but I don't think it's easy work.
Will there be an opportunity for parents to come in and listen to any of the programs through ADL?
Yes, so yeah, absolutely. So a couple of people that we're meeting with, this woman who's the Equity and Diversity Coordinator in Boston, as well as Shirley Egerton, and then in the, in the next few, few weeks. Also Senator Hines had reached out that he's trying to get some funding at the county level, based on concerns countywide that he has. So yes, the ADL program on a world of differences is somewhat sequential, and its staff were trained, now the students are in the training process and then the families. So yes, though, that's a, a huge important, and one-off things are controversial and whatnot, but a powerful speaker, a powerful kind of person can have an impact. That's what Roberta was talking about, some of these, these events. I think it has to be combined with curriculum, it has to be combined with programming. So I have a, a, a member who you heard tonight, who will join our district-wide committee, will have building-based committees, I'd love to have a school committee member as well. If you are a parent in any of the buildings, all the buildings are gonna be looking for parents. They have to have a parent, they have to have a student in their building-based committees, and then I need to have community members on the District One. Roberta was negative, I usually have been, I'm too positive sometimes, but this is one that you're just like, it's.
It's a very hard topic, right? One that we're getting smacked in the face with, I wish we could go back.
Oh, John, I'm sorry, John, my God. Poor John. Like, who's that guy? Why is he here? Does he want to talk on this? I'm sorry. We have, we have our food service director here who is so lovely and is so pleasant, he's sitting there so nicely, so he wanted to introduce himself tonight.
Thank you very much for having me. My name's John Tranfaglia. I'm the newly appointed food service director. I started back in August, replacing Rose, who finally retired after many years of service throughout the county as a food service director. It's been my pleasure to actually have known Rose for a long period of time. I've been a food service director around the county for about 17 years, so I got to know Rose very well. She did a very, very good job here for the district here. It's been my pleasure so far to slowly get to know everybody, the schools, talking to a lot of families, the students, I've been helping out quite a bit, getting to know my staff, and just the process in general of the food service program and what it has to offer to the school. I've been enjoying it very much. Main reason I came tonight is because of the cookies and coffee that are over here that are wonderful, so please make sure you help yourself, we don't want those to go to waste. A little bit about myself, I grew up in the Boston area, so you will recognize a little bit of the accent, especially late nights, it comes out a little bit more than normal. I grew up in the Boston area, worked in restaurants my entire life. I started about 15 years old, I've never done anything different. I've been out here in the Berkshires now for about 21 years. My wife and I live in Pittsfield. I have two children, I have a daughter who just graduated from Boston College, she's now living in Manhattan, enjoying life right now, spending lots of money. My son is at Endicott College and he's in his second year over there, and he absolutely loves what he's doing, enjoying the big cities. As, talking to them around the holidays, they're both excited to come back to the Berkshires and this is where I found home myself. I've been out here. I've been out here, like I said, for a little over 20 years. I thoroughly enjoy it. Food service for me has been a very important part of my life. I enjoy doing what I do and serving people. My main goal always, and especially working in schools, but always even in restaurants and anything that I've done, is to always take care of the customer. What I believe is the customer in schools is everybody. The students, the families, however I can assist them, any adult that comes into the school, delivery drivers, on down to servicemen. How you interact with people and the communication that you can build with them assists in getting the job done. The main goal that I have always, and my strong belief, is feeding the children and making sure that they can consume something that is nutritious and desirable for every child. We will never let a child, or a student, or an adult go hungry. No matter what it is, we'll figure out a way. And there's lots of different ways that we can do that. So I wanted to come tonight and just introduce myself and say hello. My email is out there, my phone number's out there. Never hesitate to contact me about anything. I enjoy very much the conversations about nutrition. What I've learned as I get older, I just turned 50 this year, so it's all right, I'm doing okay. What I've learned as I slowly start to get older is, the more that I get older, I realize that I don't know everything. But I have a stronger drive to find out the answers. And food service being such an integral part of what we do and how the students learn, and the important part of their day, I would like to make sure that we continue to develop that piece of it for any student who would like to eat. One thing that I've found so far is the staff that I have are absolutely wonderful. They've welcomed me in. They've come to understand a little bit in the short time that I've been here, how my process is, what I like to do, my organizational skills, the way in which I contact. I have an open phone policy, what I like to call it. They can contact me at any time, nights, weekends, days, whatever it might be, for any questions. And I'll always make sure that I try to at least get them the answer, if not create a solution for whatever problem that they have. So my job, I feel, is to support my staff in order so that they can continue to take care of the students that come through the door. So if you have any questions, I'm more than willing to answer anything and come back at any time.
The building committee probably is going to be dealing a lot with subjects you're familiar with, and I'm wondering if you are a part of that, or if you are aware of it, or?
I haven't made aware of it, and I welcome it. I'd be happy to be part of the whole discussion around the building project.
I think it would help us if you participate in that in some fashion.
Absolutely, absolutely.
There's an interview scheduled.
Yeah, there's an interview scheduled with John on the 29th, which is just a week away, two weeks away.
See if he's qualified.
To talk about the kitchen. It's a little late for that. Talk about the new Wacona and kitchen, the kitchen area and the services. That's scheduled for the 29th. Prior to John arriving, they also met with Rose. So they are involved at different stages.
They being DRA and SCANS.
Yes, yes, they are. They have a, for lack of a better word, a kitchen expert that comes on.
Yeah, I'm sure, but another voice doesn't hurt, even if he's not followed, but at least it gets him.
Yep.
I just, one note, I guess, of concern, as a parent, my, I get the school lunch menus, and I kind of noticed that over the last couple of months, they've seemed pretty repetitive in terms of the food that's offered. Like, last month, I noted that one week there was pasta and meatballs, and then rotini and meatballs in the same meal. And then another, there was an overlap of, you know, pizza, calzone, pizza. Over the last, my daughter's in third grade, last year, I've noticed there have been, there's been a little more diversity to the school lunch menu. I don't know if that's just something, if anyone's really taken note of that, but just seems that there is, and knowing how hard it is to plan meals myself for a family during the week, but it just seems that something's not, is a little bit of a miss this year. I don't know if you can, you know, take a little, take a look at that. Some things on the menu that in the past that have been more, that have been enjoyable, that the kids have liked. And my daughter didn't also mention that desserts are no longer there. I don't know if that's, was a healthy food choice that was made, but, you know, like the strawberry sugar cake or ice cream sandwich, which was a while that they would get, was pretty vocal that.
Yeah, I will say, one of the things on the menu design that I started to look at initially was what inventory we had currently in stock.
Okay. I was wondering if that.
Yeah, I'm very strong on keeping inventory incredibly low, purchasing, we can get food delivered every day.
Right.
So I don't like to build up a lot of inventory.
Right.
Looking at what was going on around all the schools and the inventory they had, I was trying to burn out as much as possible. The second piece of it is, one of the designs that we came up with was going from, instead of a menu designed for elementary level, middle school, and high school, we do a K to 12. It controls inventory a lot better.
Yep.
That being processed, some of the menu items had to overlap.
Okay.
And go from there. Talking about the dessert side piece of things, yes, we'll be having desserts. I'm a fan of desserts. The tricky piece of that is, I like to be able to get comfortable with what the district likes. So thank you for your comment, because that's what's kind of needed. I'd like to know where I'm at. This is actually my fourth district that I've been in. I actually just came out from North Hampton. Before that, I was at Southern Berkshire Regional and Lacks Public Schools, so I've been doing it for quite a long time. Each district would like something a little bit different.
Right.
So when people are vocal and say, no, I would like a dessert on occasions, or I'd like menus a little bit differently, it takes me a little bit of time just to get used to what people would like, what sells the best, and what works for the students themselves. So yes, you'll see menus start to change quite a bit as we start moving forward.
She also noted, like, the pizza, they used to do, like, pepperoni and cheese and a veggie, and now it just seemed like it was just cheese, so I'll let her know.
Yeah, there will be some, you'll definitely see lots of changes.
Okay.
I'm a food guy. I love to cook. I cook every night at home. We cook here. I'm always helping out in the kitchens, coming up with creative ideas. My staff have actually been giving me a hard time, because I'm the one baking the cookies off every time, and usually they do. But I enjoy doing it. So as we slowly start to move forwards, menus will start to change.
Okay.
But never hesitate to shoot me an email and just say, hey, John, you know, what's going on with that? I will admit something, though. That pasta day, we're doubled up, that was just a total goof as I was doing menus, because I always do it as pasta with meatballs, and then somewhere in there it was roti, and I'm like, oh, boy. I'm like, no one told me it's doubled up. So I did catch that. I can't play dumb on that one. That was, that was all on me.
The inventory excuse worked, though.
Yeah. That's real, yeah. That is absolutely real. But I've enjoyed my time very much since I've been here. Everyone's been very welcoming to me, and I appreciate it very much. And I look forward to our interactions as I come forward, if needed, at any time to discuss whatever you would like to talk about.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, John. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Does that conclude the superintendent's report?
It does. Thanks, John.
All right, the superintendent has noted personnel changes, some people coming and some people going. I'm not aware of any old business and not aware of any new business. And again, if the committee wishes to have certain items added to the agenda, please let me know, and we'll try to do our best to fit that in. And at this time, we'll accept remarks for the committee's needs. Anyone? John?
Couple of things. I'm right tonight, we've been listening to the ground healing of our students, and looking forward to replacing that. And for the new people, again, I've been on school committee for quite a while, and seen many different characteristics to it. We've had some colorful people on the school committee in the past, but this committee the past few years has been doing really well, working very well together. You're coming on board at a very good time, where, you know, you're going to see, you know, how good this school committee works. And like Dick said earlier, all this year, it's all about the kids, so I want to be welcome aboard.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I've just got a couple of closing remarks. I wanted to thank all returning committee members, and I wanted to thank all new committee members, and I want to thank all members for serving Central Berkshire. It's very much appreciated for all the families and the students. Mike, Todd, and Rob, if you don't mind, you can, you can object to this, but we'd like to get your picture at some point in time and have all your data up on the school